Okay, we're live.
Okay, good evening. I would like to call to order the September 14, 2020 Lake Washington School Board Study Session. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and participating remotely. All meeting participants will also be joining this meeting in a remote meeting. The information will be issued on the district's website. If you stream the meeting, viewers can call 425-936-2813, conference ID 37127, to listen to the meeting. Regular board meetings and study sessions will continue to be livestreamed on the Lake Washington School District website and posted for viewing within two days. The topics on the agenda for the study session tonight are, first, is a review of reasonable interpretation and legislative priorities. So, Dr. Holman, would you lead us through OE 10 and 11, the review of the reasonable interpretations?
Absolutely. And one of the conversations that, I believe it was Eric, Mark, and I had with Cabinet around policies and, in particular, OE 10 and 11, when we're thinking about remote learning and the impact of that, and really data that we want to think about as we're doing monitoring this year. And so, we spent some time going through both OE 10 and OE 11 to see where there are places where we felt like specific indicators could be called out that then would lead to appropriate monitoring data later in the school year. We also, thinking about our racial equity work this year, also thinking about, are there places within these policies where we want to consider race, issues of race and equity, and thinking about some of the data that would want to be reported? And I think that's going to be ongoing work. We did an initial consideration today, not a final consideration, knowing that we're going to want to continue to evaluate all of our policies with that racial equity lens. And so, you'll see, the proposal tonight will have both indicators related to remote learning with a few indicators related to our race and equity work. And so, we didn't do an overhaul of the policies, knowing that we just did all of our policy work a year ago. And so, we just did some addition to the policy indicators, knowing that the superintendent's interpretation was just approved last year, the current indicators were just approved last year. So, we didn't do, again, an overhaul of the policies. This is just a review of indicators related specifically to remote learning, and while we were having that conversation, also used an equity lens on that as well. And so, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. In the Board folder for the study session, Diane uploaded these documents for you to have in hand. And so, we'll start with OE 10, Learning Environment. And, as you may know or may not, Associate Superintendent Matt Gillingham actually takes the lead on these data, because many of these data elements are relevant to the work within his division. And so, any Cabinet members can chime in with comments as we go. We just reviewed this today. And so, as I walk through this, I will indicate the policy section, and then you'll see, if you have it pulled up on your screen, any indicator in red is a new indicator that we are proposing. And, really, this is the Board's chance to either discuss, think about, revise the indicators, knowing that this is then what drives monitoring later in the year. And so, I will go through, as I go through, if there's comments. Eric, I can't see all of the screens, and so, you'll have to help me out with calling on hands and things like that. But I'll just pause after I read the overall policy statement and the updated indicator, and then if there's comments or discussion, we can hold it then. And so, let me read the overall policy statement. It's, OE 10 is learning environment and treatment of students. The overall policy statement is, "The superintendent shall establish and maintain a learning environment that is safe, respectful, free from unnecessary disruption, and conducive to effective learning." And so, with that in mind, 10.1 is, "Maintain a collaborative school culture that ensures high expectations and success for all children in all classrooms through equitable and aligned systems and supports." And so, the updated indicator here in red states that schools have developed and implemented communication and support structures to ensure all students are engaged in learning. And when I think about some of the data that will be generated from that, I think it's both on the remote learning side and on the equity side. And I guess the other way to walk through this, Eric, is just if you want me to go through all of the recommendations, and then Board members can, we can just jump back to...
Let's go item by item for now.
Okay.
Director Bliesner has her hand raised.
Thank you. So, as I'm following through, when I look at the indicators, my thing is, my question I always ask when I look at that is, what does that telling me in regards to an outcome and a product at the end, or is it a process-oriented thing? Again, this sort of feels to me like it's process, as opposed to, I'd want to say that our schools have, you know, engaged 95% of our students in learning and... in learning. Because it's by having the communication and support structures that we succeed at having them engaged in learning. So, I think the outcome I'm interested in is, are they engaged?
Okay. And so, do you see the engagement? Because the policy statement is about aligned systems and supports.
Yeah, I'll just chime in. I mean, I hear Director Bliesner's point. For this, I mean, for this policy, though, I mean, I mean, we are, the policy is actually getting at problem or process, right? We're talking about a culture. I don't know. I think this indicator is good.
Siri, do you think one of the data...
How will we know that whatever communication or support structure that's there shows that our kids are engaged in learning? How will you know that?
Well, so, I mean, that's, that's really the, as we went through last year updating the monitoring reports, I think all of us, Board and staff, really learned what those evidence of compliance outcome statements need to be. And so, if we're saying that all students are engaged in learning, I think then the outcome statement is exactly what you just indicated. I think if the Board creates an indicator of 95%, that's actually setting a benchmark.
Fair.
And so, what you stated, I think, is the, what an evidentiary statement would be when we're talking about, because it's engaged and learning. So, I think we would need data to reflect both of those.
Actually, I would say it's, it is actually a piece of the indicator, because you do typically set what that goal would be. This was a piece of the piece we were having and hoping to be able to go through and resolve some of these as we discussed these reports. Because how do you know that's in compliance?
Fair. And if that's, not to get into overall policy discussion too much, we would need to go through and update all of the, almost all of our indicators, if that's how we want them to read. Because the majority of our indicators across OE, really, three through, is it 13, really aren't benchmarked like that.
I don't disagree, but it might be that we could start, at least with the ones going forward, that we place that into play, and then we can look at how we update the other ones as well, if needed.
Okay.
So, Siri, I'm curious about this one, because what we asked for was maintaining a school culture. And are you seriously asking him to quantitate that?
Yeah.
I mean, I have to admit that I'm kind of cool with this, where we've asked him to have a process, and he said, "We have a process." Am I interested in diving deeper into what that process is? Not necessarily.
No, I want to know if the process is effective.
Okay, that's...
Did it accomplish what we wanted?
But it's, it, yeah, that's going to be hard for some of these. I mean, hard virginal in some...
Absolutely. So, where feasible, we do it.
Okay.
My key is, I want to know, are our kids engaged, all of them? And that's why we're speaking to the demographics, we're speaking to those pieces and that breakout. That really is the indicator that we're saying of compliance.
I think it's going to be really hard for John to pick out indicators to prove compliance if we don't have something, some measurable component.
Well, and that's the agreeing before he tries to measure it on what to measure. And I'm still looking at this one, because the, at least 10.1, we're talking about maintaining a school culture. It's not about, do the students feel engaged, or, I mean, this one's not even one you can answer through a student survey. We're asking for a collaborative school culture that has high expectations. And how do you measure that? Sure, you could query the, I guess you could put a teacher survey, but, you know...
You could ask families. You could ask kids. You get, the expectations are societal and family norms. That's what the piece of expectations are.
How many high school parents know what their kid's teacher's expectations are of their children? There comes a point where I don't think you could, it's like asking people about how tall someone is who they don't know. Certainly, at the elementary level, that might work. But anyway, I'm, I'm mostly concerned that this is just one subcomponent of one of several where we're going to have this problem. And I'd rather focus on the important ones, rather than ask John to do a deep dive on every single one of them.
I don't disagree with that, but I do think we need to be thoughtful that we don't only look at process. That must have been a challenge through all of these, that we hear what is happening, not necessarily how effectively it has succeeded at what we're asking for. So...
Yeah. Yeah. No, and the fact that I'm arguing against trying to report back on, I mean, plie has been missing the E in an awful lot of examples over the last decade. So, yeah.
I guess why I would toss my sword down on this one, if I were to say, is around engagement and inclusiveness on that engagement piece. That I would want clear indicators on that, because that is the remote learning and that is the equity.
Which ties into our equity work going forward to create a policy, but also points out in that equity work, the student voice that we are lacking.
So, John, I don't see these two documents in our portal. It would be helpful for me if I had them in our Board packet for all OE discussions, just so I can skip back and forward by one page to see what the previous page said. Because I'm not sure, when we talk about equitable and aligned systems and supports, that's just the systems and supports. That's not equity, per se. And I think that that might be in the superset of this. Maybe it's at the top of 10, but I don't see it in the stuff we're looking at right now on screen.
I just forward it to Board and Cabinet, so you can have it.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, I'm just going to take notes as we go. That's, and I don't, this won't be prepared. You know, ideally, this comes back to the Board for a first reading. And so, what I may do is put it back to the Board for review and writing. And then, if you have individually any comments around that, then I will take that feedback and then provide it for the Board to have conversation at a formal Board meeting for a first reading. And how does that sound as a process, knowing that...
Yeah.
I don't think we want to wordsmith all of these, but the conversation is helpful to make sure that we're capturing what the Board wants. Okay?
I guess we can move to the next one, but I just want to say, I think, I think both the interpretation and the indicators are reasonable in light of what the policy is, which I think is, could use some work, actually. That seems like part of the issue, is we don't know exactly what we're asking. But, there you go.
Fair.
Okay, thank you. All right. 10.2, "Ensure an inclusive, equitable, welcoming, and safe school environment." So, again, it's a, it's a process, and we had this conversation today in Cabinet as well. It's a process indicator update. Schools have established engagement processes to address issues of equity, racial equity, and inclusion. My thinking around this was directly related to our school equity teams, and some of the outcomes that will come from that, I believe, would be the data that's reported, as well as just an outcome of schools actually fulfilling their, the expectation of having a school equity team.
But then, wouldn't the indicator just be, 100% of our schools have active and functioning school equity teams?
Sorry, was that a, I didn't catch the whole thing, Siri. Will you say that one more time?
As sort of the indicator, listening to that, you know, if I were to think about for this year, and what, you know, 100% of our schools have, you know, effective district equity teams. How you define effective is a whole nother ballgame, but, you know, are working. I guess that's where I keep trying to think of, that that's that indicator. Now, clearly, there can be other engagement processes that you might use, absolutely. And I get that, but at the same time, you might want to be targeting specific things as we go through as well, if that's a key component to making the equity work across our system.
Right.
Director Stewart, Chris, I'm going to cut you off. Mark has hand raised for a minute.
That's all right. My bad.
Good, Chris. You're engaged. I'll wait after you.
Well, so, I'm actually piggybacking on what Siri said for this one. The right, the phrasing attempt to is, "Ensure a blank, blank, blank environment." It doesn't say, "attempt to provide a blank, blank, blank environment." If it was "attempt to provide", then having established processes would be enough. But ensuring that we have successfully provided it, which is how I interpret it, "ensure," and maybe, let me see if this is somewhere, yeah, so, you've got sort of in here that it's, that the students have a strong sense of connection and belonging. So, your superintendent interpretation is along the lines of, "it was provided." Therefore, the indicator of compliance should have a dimension to it, which is, "did students feel that it was inclusive, that welcoming and safe?" And so, that would be, I'm with you on this one.
Okay. My concern is that, you know, it's one thing to establish engagement processes. It's no other to me to, okay, I establish the processes, now what am I doing with it? What am I doing to demonstrate that I'm actually reaching out? Are there programs that I can implement that the district has shared with me, and I've already started implementing to do this? See where I'm going? I want to see something tangible, as opposed to saying, "we have the policy, and we have processes out there." Well, are the processes being implemented? And maybe I'm just saying the same thing y'all are saying to different people. That's all.
Okay. I think, I mean, I'll just say, the Board, I mean, the superintendent is volunteering to us that we will evaluate him on whether all the schools have established these processes. I don't want to scratch that off the list. I think these are, I think these are help, I think these are helpful things to ensuring an inclusive, equitable, and welcoming school environment. And I would expect that our schools would have those at a minimum. So, I think I want to retain this as an indicator of compliance. I do think it's important for this, we have some, you know, measurable outcome. I think we do have that with the first, where we are surveying students. So, okay. Mark, your hand's on it.
Yeah, I hear you, Eric. I agree that this ought to stay in, and I'm wondering if there's enough meat on the bones, though. That'd be my only thought. If they were to be able to show some kind of measurement, or, you know, if we're going to measure John against this, then there has to be some kind of measurement for John to be able to show us that the schools are doing such and such. See where I'm going?
Yeah, and I think, well, I think the report would have, would have to document that and show that, that schools have those and provide evidence of it.
And so, how would we know it was compliance, that it met the standard that we were saying? Would that be that all of them have it? Would it be that 50% do? Would it be that? So, it's looking at, how do you, how do you say yes? And so, that it's not then dependent on, well, I think it's this, and Eric thinks it's this, and Eric thinks it's this.
No, that's right. I mean, the answer is, you put the word "all" in front of "schools."
There you go.
I was just going to ask if we have a standard expectation for all schools to be doing the same thing or a similar process?
We do.
I think we have, to be quite frank.
And so, my next question to the...
Yeah, otherwise, we don't have a district policy. We have school to school policy.
Dr. Holman?
To Siri's question or comment, wouldn't we need to then rewrite indicators one and two for 10.2 as well?
Ideally, one would have a number in front of it, yes. I would agree, that say percentage of some kind, but you were trying to get a baseline for that one, so there was no reason to have to do it then, right? Because the idea was, well, what's the baseline? And then, how do you improve it from there? And the other actually is a pretty clear, you have policies that do this.
All right.
And that's, that's a process indicator as well?
Absolutely. I'm only looking at the red ones, because that's what we're looking at tonight.
Great. Okay. All right. Let's see. 10.3, "Ensure that all policies and procedures regarding discipline are collaboratively developed, appropriately communicated to students and parents, and enforced consistently using reasonable judgment." So, my addition to this was, "Disproportionality of discipline is reduced or is eliminated." And disproportionality is a, it's a specific data point that we actually monitor and we've reported previously. And so, in thinking about all of this, that seemed to be the piece that was potentially missing.
Yeah.
I would just add, over time, potentially, or trends.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, yeah, I mean, my question is, what is reduced? What does that, what do you, what do you mean by that, John?
What do I mean by "reduced"?
Yeah, I mean, is it from the prior year?
Yeah. Yeah. And maybe Matt can jump in and talk about our disproportionality. We have a significantly low discipline rate as a district already. And even with that low rate, we still see patterns of disproportionality for our black and brown students, our students receiving special education services. And so, so we have those rates right now. Those have been reported to the Board over a number of years. And so, it's continuing, so reduction is just seeing a consistent downward trend, if you will, so that there isn't a difference based on factors, that our discipline is actually implemented in a similar manner, regardless of those factors.
Okay.
So, a consistent declining trend?
Yes.
Or is eliminated?
Yeah.
Just building the concept of over time.
Yep. Thank you. So, I'm just going to skip the ones that I didn't add an additional indicator.
That'll make our life easier.
Okay. 10.6 is, "The superintendent may not tolerate any behaviors, actions, or attitudes by adults who have contact with students that hinder the academic performance or the well-being of students." And so, here, I just referenced the adoption of administrative policy related to equity, racial equity, and inclusion. So, again, it's a process, because it's about adoption of policy. But given that that's where we are with the work, I think that's, that's appropriate.
Here's, yeah, I think this is a good addition. Here's again, I think Siri did raise, I've been marinating on Siri's point more. And I do think, you know, this is another place where student survey data is, I mean, that's how we, we can know. All right, we could, I mean, that is the data, that is, I think that's how we can know whether this is occurring. I don't think we, I don't know that we have that today. Chris, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to chime in and say that that's, it's sort of a both-and thing, because adopting the policy, developing and adopting the policies this year is obviously a high value. But the, the question on, how do you measure the experience of students in the district under this policy, is still something that one could extract from a student survey of some sort. So, I don't think they're any mutually exclusive. Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Director Stewart? Mark, you may be on the...
I'm going to be off there.
Yeah.
Now, it's on. Oh, okay. The, in the inclusion section in that statement, it seems you also need to have a parent component there for a survey, because I want to know from parents, because that really, the inclusion, to me, goes to a lot of the differently-abled kids. And for a special needs environment, being included in typical classrooms. So, I think in addition to asking the students if they feel included, you're going to have to ask the parents too, because a lot of those students will not be able, really, to say yea or nay. And so, I want to know from the parents, do they feel their students being included or not?
John, a question for you. We add this indicator, you know, for the next month or so. When, when would the first time the Board, I guess, when would the first time be the Board, what, be evaluating?
You cut, you cut out just a little bit there, but I think what you're asking is...
District had adopted.
When will we, when will we monitor these?
I'm going with that video. I think my baby monitor's on.
Yeah. My intention is to monitor them this year, and that's why we're doing it early in the year. It's also, as we get into OE 11, you'll also see much more commentary around remote learning. And that was kind of the genesis of this conversation, was how do we evaluate remote learning in terms of Board policy and monitoring?
Right. Okay, thanks. Are you able to hear me? Is everyone able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, now you're back.
I'm going to go without video for a little while.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's see. Okay, and that's the end of OE 10. And so, when I jump over to OE 11, can you still see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, great comments on OE 10. Thank you. All right. This is a policy that really is driven in Mike's division of teaching and learning. And so, it's about the instructional program. It says, "The superintendent shall maintain a program of instruction that offers challenging and relevant opportunities for all students to achieve at levels defined in the Board's results policies." And with the lens of thinking about students in remote learning, that's where we, we started. And so, 11.1 says, "Assure that the instructional, that instructional programs are based on a comprehensive and objective..." says, "Assure that the instructional, that instructional programs are based on a comprehensive and objective review of effective practices and research." And so knowing that that policy statement is related to effective practices and research, added an indicator that the 2021 remote learning implements effective or evidence-based practices. And thinking about the data that would come from that, it would be reporting what was used really as the benchmark for our professional learning and training for staff.
Chris?
I got to say on this one, all I need is that Mike's team endorsed it. So I know you guys have done a tremendous amount of work in this realm this year, and I appreciate adding that, but it's, it's really something where the evidence-based practices, the research that's going on at warp speed and lord knows how many long nights. So I'm just pre-anticipating your report that you can do a lot and just say, reference back to all of our reports.
Yes. And this is, we actually did benchmark our professional learning for staff with evidence-based practices. And so we'll be able to report on that as well as kind of the ongoing work that we're doing this year. Okay, 11.4 is the next. Says, "The superintendent will effectively measure each student's progress toward achieving or exceeding the standards." And this was an interesting, an interesting one where we didn't exactly know what would occur. But as of this point in time, Smarter Balance is going to be required. And so we left that in here. Well, it's really the entire state assessment program is in play. And so we didn't really have to update this much, with the exception of our adoption of FastBridge, which replaced our DIBELS literacy assessment. So you can see it's updated there for, instead of DIBELS literacy for grade two, end of year, it's FastBridge. And then also in addition, reporting out data around FastBridge literacy and math screening and progress monitoring for grades K-8, indicating student growth from beginning of the year to end of year.
Chris, I have a question for you. Go ahead.
Actually, I was just going to say, so FastBridge, DIBELS was just K-2, so the FastBridge is going to give us K-8 data?
Correct.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you.
Just a question on that bullet point. It says, "For grades K-8 indicates student growth from beginning of the-" That, that is, that is what it does, right? It measures student growth. We're not saying it, it shall show that the students grow because that would not be part of an OE, that'd be an ER.
Right. Mike, do you, Mike, do you want to talk about the measure, the outcome measures that we'll get from FastBridge?
Yeah, so again, I think, like we said, what it does is it measures literacy and math. It, the nice thing is it's got a huge database of students from all over the country who take it. So you can, you can see how our students compare to others, but it also benchmarks where students should be in literacy and math by grade level. So, you know, at the beginning of the year, it will tell you, okay, kids in third grade should be at this point. With a year's worth of growth, they should be at this point. And then, so you can see if we've made at least a year's worth of growth or more. So it's a tool that we haven't had in the system until now. It's pretty exciting. It's our first year of implementation. And so just tomorrow, in fact, we're working with our elementary principals to talk about how we're going to be administering it in a remote setting. It's a computer, a computer-delivered task, so students actually sit at a device and take it. And then teachers get data reports back. So there is a pretty heavy implementation phase that we're in right now to, to make this happen.
The, so for SBA and, and, well, I guess, I guess my question is, for the first, first step, we're saying 95% of students are tested. What percentage of students are we, I mean, are you thinking will be tested using FastBridge or literacy?
Our goal is 100%. As you know, with Smarter Balance, we have families, and there was a movement before. I don't think it's quite as significant now, of families who chose to opt out. We have students that are older that just say, "I don't need this assessment," though that's changed a little bit. With FastBridge, though, the expectation is we, we get every kid. And so, you know, for example, if a student's absent, we would test them on another day. I mean, there may be a small number where a family says, you know, "I really don't want you testing my kid," but we're not anticipating that. So it would be, the goal would be to assess every student. Like I said, I think this year really is going to be implementing, figuring it out, making sure it works. And so it, it really is, like you're saying, I think, an implementation stage. And so I think we should still shoot for 100%. It might be a little bit less than that, but.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
Any other comment?
All right, 11.5. Superintendent will assure that the instructional program includes opportunities for students to develop talents and interests in their specialized areas of interest. And so thinking about the, the practices and outcomes from those practices in our curriculum piece, I think we also heard public comment around that tonight, added an indicator, "The district uses a process to review and implement curriculum that better represents the diversity experiences and racial makeup of students in our district."
Siri, you want to go first?
You're welcome to.
No, go ahead. I meant to actually take my hand down.
If you could actually just scroll down for a second. I just wanted to read the actual policy above that. So I can't see anything these days with this print. And so this, this makes me think of, as we hear the public comments around curriculum and different components, this is sort of, to me, a piece of where that falls in the sense of equity in many ways. And I can understand the process, but again, I would think there's a piece of, are we actually doing it? Can we demonstrate that we have a diverse set of classes that do do this? Can we demonstrate that? I just know we did a lot of work even over the last eight years since I've been on the board, where you've sort of aligned across all the schools. I remember middle school, science and math, and looking at those options, AP offerings throughout all our high schools. This, to me, is that same thing. How well are we with electives and addressing the differing backgrounds that we have now and what we do to bring that in? So the process is important, but I want to know, the compliance piece to me is that we have it. I can go to the school catalog and I can see it. I can hear it happening in different places. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and I think it's also a function of the scale of the task, too. I mean, I, I guess we would have to think about what, what makes sense given where we are right now. So, for example, I think in public comment, there was some legislation mentioned tonight. Really, that was to say to OSPI, make resources available. And then we have an obligation to take advantage of those resources and incorporate them into our curriculum. I mean, we're in a great place right now because we're reviewing and adopting social studies curriculum at the secondary level. I mean, perfect place to start, right? So would it be, you know, the social studies curriculum includes components of history that represent, you know, black and Hispanic students to a greater extent? I, I think that might be, because I think you could also then go to math and science and, and right now, we're, the way we do adoptions is kind of in a stage-based approach, so.
So the question would be, is that indicator better say, in the district's curriculum, right, represents the diversity experience and racial makeup of the students in our district? And then under that, you might be attacking different components of that as you go through it. But that's sort of the overarching indicator? But then it might take five years, right? Then it might, you chunk it.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Mark, your hand on up?
Yes. As I look at this and I look at the, and listen to Siri's discussion about how we implement the various changes as she looks through the course calendar and what can be taken and so forth. I'm wondering if, as we make these adjustments, as Mike looks at new curriculum in the, the secondary and high school history classes, social studies classes, I'm, I'm concerned that when we do it, we're not, it's not being visible enough to enough to the parents. If I've got kids in elementary school, I'm not going to know that you've got all these diversity classes or classes that represent diversity in high school. So I think there's some way, in some manner, we have to be able to, to be able to send people to page X on the website saying, okay, these are the programs that have been implemented. These are the educational opportunities, whether it's a class in this or that, whether it's a new, that we've implemented new curriculum in world history for seniors or whatever. See where I'm going? The idea that it's one thing to do the work, but if no one knows you've done it, it doesn't matter? And if, you know, and you implement new classes and the kids really, they've, they've got the list, but if they aren't pointed, it's not pointed out to them, this is new, and this is one of the reasons we have it in the curriculum. That would stimulate to me as a student, gee, I might want to take that. Just a thought from the cheap seats.
Yeah. Siri, your hand still raised. Did you have anything else to add? No?
No, I just forgot to lower it.
Okay. I think this indicator is a good addition. And I, but I think that, I like Siri's proposed revision to it.
Yep, thank you. Okay, 11.6. Superintendent will assure the instructional program accommodates the different learning styles of students and differentiates instruction to meet the needs of students of various backgrounds and abilities. So the additional proposed indicator that remote learning instructional program provides students the opportunity for extension and remediation?
Good.
I have an "and" I want to put there. And the, the students do better. I mean, it's just that "and", it's shown to be effective. And...
Great, yep.
I don't have the "and." I just know that that's what I want.
I think the challenge is better as compared to what, I mean, this is really our baseline year. And so I even like to say, well, we can look at other districts and their assessment scores, but everybody's kind of in this first phase, so.
Well, I think this is when you disaggregate, right? And you're going to look across it that way. And so you're going to be looking at, you know, I guess the easiest cut would be thinking if you use 504 as well as, I know we split out the special education by type of qualification they had for it. So I think dyslexia would be one of the places that I would look, because I think that could be a big impact, kind of a big push there. And how do we confirm that we're still succeeding in that area? I guess that's what is the "and" piece that I would be looking for. And extension, you know, ask, were you bored? Did we succeed in keeping you? I know.
And in relation to peer groups, right? So I think that would be helpful as well.
And at no additional cost. I mean, some students have done the summer school piece for remediation. There's a cost factor.
Yeah. John, John, is that, is that, are you getting what you need out of, from the board in response to that?
Absolutely. I'll ask questions. I'll, I'll be specific if I'm, if I'm not. I'm just taking notes here. Okay, 11.8. Superintendent will encourage new and innovative programs, carefully monitoring and evaluating the effectiveness of all such programs at least annually. One of the things we said today about this, we believe moving to remote learning is the definition of innovation. But, so we tried to capture it in this statement. Remote learning implements systems and digital applications required for student engagement, access, and learning.
So here's my question, and this is probably too big to answer here, is how would you know you were effective at implementing the remote learning? What would tell us that? I don't think that's an indicator, but that's what I'm sort of looking at. That's the piece. How would we know?
Well, we're going to have participation rates like we were sharing tonight. So are students actually using the tools, the platforms, at what rates? We'll have our achievement data through our screening and progress monitoring. We'll have grades. We'll have state assessment scores. But I think, you know, you hit on some things earlier, too, of asking students, like, we are hearing from some students, I love the flexibility I have in my remote learning now. I can do things when it makes sense to me. We're hearing from other students, I am just, this is not working for me. So I think that would be another really good measure, too, of, you know, what's your experience? How helpful is it to you? Is it making a difference for you? What might help it be more meaningful for you? Would be interesting.
So what might be interesting this time is, is we had talked about student voice and the Student Advisory Council as well as maybe being able to tack in some of those, hold these conversations with them and have them help facilitate those maybe in other places. So as opposed to a survey, truly dialogue it. This doesn't have to be quantitative. It can use sort of the experiences that we hear as well. That's what monitoring is about. It's not necessarily only a number.
And what I would love to see is, are there things we do in remote learning that when we're back in person, some kids would go, this actually worked? And so we could actually continue to provide that to you because we have it, we figured it out.
No, I think that's great. There's good stuff in there, so that might be the piece. What worked? What do we keep? What do we keep building on? What do we? I mean, I think the nine o'clock start time people are liking, so.
Anyone else? Oh, Mark?
Yeah, the nine o'clock start time came up again today. A lot of commentary with, you know, with the primary reason that we did not go to it was the logistical problem with transportation. There, there is quite a bit of comment from the parents, why we couldn't go to, the later starts now. That said, I'm hearing from other families that their kids in class till five something. So I don't know if, and is it worth switching the, the system just while we're in remote? If we're only going to be here for a year?
Yep. All right. John, you want to keep going?
Yep. So 11.9. Superintendent will assure the instructional program includes a compelling and realistic vision of technology that specifies technology use in, in the learning environment, integration of technology into content areas across all grade levels, and integration of adaptive technology as appropriate. So the indicator that we added was implementation of technology, hardware and software, support a robust remote learning environment and delivery platform.
I was just going to comment briefly. I remember my first year here, Siri was pushing us to have remote meetings. I think it was our Instructional Materials Committee, and we didn't hit a certain target to have a quorum. And Siri said, "Can't you just do this remotely? Like, figure it out?" And here we are, these many years later, and look at us. We figured it out.
It is amazing what crisis can do.
It took eight years?
Eight, well, six. I remember Matt Monobiano pulled me in and said, "You've got to figure out how to do your meetings remotely." And I went, "Okay."
I do think it has opened up a lot of opportunities, though, the whole remote piece and just, it, it just allows a little more equitable access as well for people. And you take out travel, you take out so many different components.
Yeah. Yeah, our training, it's really helping, too. We, we're typically limited by building space to bring people together and travel time and things like that. Now we can-
So you remember that conversation I had, too? Of, let's just teach them remotely because it'd be easier than hauling them in?
Yep.
I think this is fine.
Okay. Scrolling down to the next one. So 11.12. Superintendent will protect the instructional time provided for students during the academic day. And so the indicator we added was schedule for remote learning provides adequate time for direct instruction and student work time. for direct instruction and student work time. And that's the end.
Okay.
And so Eric, would you agree if I take a run at OE 11 and 12 again, and then provide it to the board in writing, that that's the next step for this?
Yeah.
Get individual comments back, finalize it, and then put it on an upcoming board agenda for discussion at the, for a first reading, and then if there's refinement based on that discussion, we can do that as well?
Yeah, I think that's right. I think that the next step, their additional edits are just word smithing, that's easier to do in writing.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And that's the, that's all I had for OE 10 and 11. I appreciate the conversation. It's always helpful.
Okay, the, the next item on our agenda for the study session is a review of the 2020 legislative priorities and platform.
For WASDA.
For WASDA, thank you.
Okay. So for anybody listening that isn't familiar, WASDA refers to the Washington State School Directors Association, and it's an agency that supports all 295 school districts in the state of Washington. And their assembly for reviewing permanent positions and legislative proposals for the legislative session is called General Assembly, and it's going to be held virtually on September 25th. And as the legislative representative, I've been given the nod to be the person who casts the votes, and I want to make certain that anything that we, well, let me back up. Siri did a lot of work, I know you said it's copy and paste, but that was a lot of time, that would have taken me way longer, to take all of the permanent position proposals and new proposals and legislative position proposals, positions, and put them into a survey so each of us could read through and, you know, agree or disagree, or pass as consolidated, or do not pass as recommended, whatever the case may be. And when we tallied all of those up, again, Siri tallied all of those up, we didn't, Siri did, it looks like we have a few that are not in agreement that we should probably discuss before I go and cast a vote on anything. So to that end, I emailed you guys a spreadsheet that says, well, this one looks like it says, copy of 2020 final WASDA. If you see that Excel spreadsheet, if you'd like to reference what we're doing, if you, if you're seeing it, and I don't know if John has that copy and can put it on the screen, but the areas where we didn't agree are the orange highlighted areas, areas where, say, two or more of us said, you know, I'm unsure, or I disagree, that really looked like things we should probably have a conversation about. The green areas, we all agree, the yellow areas, I called everybody or tried to, that had, you know, an uncertain position, or maybe even were the only do not to ask them what their concerns were and talked through them, and I think all of those have been resolved. So we're really focusing on where we didn't have agreement, which again will be the orange rows. So the first tab is Permanent Proposal Survey Summary, and that should have about 16 rows. Does everybody see that? And the two orange are at the top? I think you're muted, Siri.
It's on the screen now, it's great.
Oh, I was reading my own copy, thank you. So I also emailed everybody a copy of the handbook, which describes the proposal, any changes made to it, any new proposals, and that's just called the General Assembly Handbook. So if you want to refer to that as we go through, I'm hoping this won't take a whole lot of time, but let's start with the Permanent Proposal Summary, and it's 0.8.1, top of the screen here, Equity Statement. And it reads, hold on a sec. So the current position statement is equity is foundational to the work of WASDA. Educational equity can only exist when a student's level of opportunity and achievement cannot be predicted based upon race, characteristics, or circumstances. Therefore, we must identify and eliminate any discriminatory practices and prejudices within our state's public education system, and that was just adopted last year, and I'm not going to read the rest to you. But you can see right next to it is the Proposed Amendment. And it is taking out a few of the defining terms from the original and placing in sort of characteristics. And I would love it for anybody who had concerns about this to go ahead and voice their concerns.
Trying to find it so I can display it. I'm trying to remember if I was one of the people who voted no.
Oh, Siri, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so just in regards to this amendment, the, the initial proposal that was adopted two year, or last year, actually, had spent about two years being worked through with the Board of WASDA, and on there, and had come through a committee that way, and then it had been approved by WASDA Board, actually, over a year ago, and then last year at Delegate Assembly, it came forward to all the delegates. So that's been the initial adoption. The concern from both the, at the Equity Caucus that we held in August, the discussion that took place on that amendment was the belief that that amendment was actually watering down what the strength of that initial proposal is, and I would agree with that. Our goal really is the public school system, and it sort of is a stronger, broader policy stance, and the amendments are actually making it more operational as opposed to more value-based driven, which is what it should be. So that's why I don't support the amendment, nor did the Equity Action Caucus did not either. We were all pretty much like, no, would not be our priority to support that.
And I agree. I think it took, you know, an incredibly powerful statement and belief, value, and sort of watered it down, so it's not quite as strong. And if we're looking at a statewide, which is, WASDA is statewide issues, not Lake Washington issues, I would hate to see anything water it down. Mark?
Yeah, to be quite frank, a couple of these, I couldn't see where they were going from and to, to be quite frank, whether they're getting stricter or less strict, and perhaps this may be one of them. So if, if we're watering down something, no, I wouldn't be in favor of that whatsoever. It's just a matter of, to be quite frank, in that survey, there were times that I was going from four different sides to try and figure what the hell was going on, so I'd be in favor of keeping it stricter.
And it's ironic, they edited two sentences. The first sentence, I agree with their edits, because characteristics such as race allows you to speak to characteristics such as poverty, characteristics such as ability. So I would have liked if it was just that one, but the second one, now that you pointed out, yeah, they really watered down that second sentence, and that's where the meat of it is. And so I'm comfortable with changing that to a do not pass.
Is there any way we can split that?
Actually, at this point, I don't believe that it, there is, because I think all amendments had to go prior, Cassandra can speak to that specifically. I, I would also push back that I'm not sure changing to such as is actually beneficial. Part of the reason it was at the broader perspective is because all those fall under it. It's actually a much broader, and actually it draws out race specifically, circumstances or characteristics, so it doesn't get lost within those things. The idea was that it really was stronger originally.
And the opportunity to propose an amendment has passed.
You can't amend from the floor?
Not in the virtual world.
It's virtual this year, and they're trying to find a way to make it all work, and that's one that they can't pull off.
All right, I'm convinced, I'm going to agree that way.
Okay, and then the second line there is the Conservation 3.8.2. If you have your handbook in front of you, let me find it.
Can everyone see that?
Yes, thank you very much. So you can see, WASDA encourages school boards to adopt policies intended to maximize efforts at conservation to increase the efficiency of operations and extend the earth's resources. And they've added a proposal for conservation and stewardship. Oh, I just missed it. There we go. WASDA encourages school boards to adopt policies intended to promote fiscal and environmental conservation and stewardship. So for those that disagreed with this proposal, I will entertain dialogue now.
I think I was, I was unsure on this one, because I didn't understand why we were combining environmental conservation with fiscal stewardship. So I was a little confused, actually, when I read their amendments, because it didn't seem like it was truly the current position.
I believe I was unsure on this as well.
Is it, is it possible they were looking to, that not only were you going to maximize your efforts, but you're actually going to put your money where your mouth is? Is that what they're looking for?
I am not sure.
Yeah, this doesn't, this is like two different things in one. It's, it's like compound, right?
That was my take, is that they, they didn't fit, and I don't know why they did it.
I don't recall my initial vote on this, but now I think it's a bad idea, so I'm, I'm against the amendment.
Okay, so against. All right, and if we could have the other tab opened and displayed?
Is there anyone else? I don't know. Seems kind of strange.
Oh, sorry, I didn't ask for everybody.
Seems like they combined two resolutions.
Yeah, no, that's my sense.
I'm with Eric.
If we go to the second...
Carefully, and I don't need to dissect this one, no, I'm good with saying no.
Okay. If we go to the tab that says ledge positions?
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay. Okay, so again, the top in the orange sections are the ones where we didn't have agreement. So if we look at linking graduation requirements to career pathways, it looks like two of us said pass and two were unsure. So is there anybody who was unsure who would like to speak? Or anybody who wanted it to pass that would like to speak?
I was unsure and I don't want to speak.
Thank you for being succinct.
Honestly, I'm, I'm more interested in dissecting the one where we actually had some disagreement between do pass and do not pass. There were two of them that were real interesting there.
Well, at the moment, this seems like it doesn't pass because it didn't get a majority of votes, so I want anyone who thinks it should pass to have that opportunity.
I'll be honest, at some point, I was trying to answer things, and I got into a section where I couldn't find it in the handbook, so I just hit unsure on all of them. So I don't have a, I don't have a strongly felt unsure on a whole bunch of these.
I'm glad you told me that, I was really worried about you.
Yeah, I'm, you should worry about me, but that's not why.
Okay. So what...
I don't remember how I answered, but I think this is fine, and if I answered unsure, it's, I don't know why.
Okay. Just because it's word smithing.
Yeah.
So everybody is okay with a pass on this one?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. So the next one is on special education and special needs students. Two of us said pass, and again, three said unsure.
But, but this one, I believe, is because it was combining those two?
Yes, that's right.
It was a consolidation.
Right, it was a consolidation.
And so I had to put it in the survey twice. You had to vote on the consolidation, and if the consolidation lost, you had to do each one individually, and I think that was confusing to people.
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably...
Remains confusing. My default vote when it's confusing is unsure.
That did seem to be what it was, yes.
Won the club.
But I think we all agreed that the consolidation made sense.
Yeah, so I just didn't know how to vote in favor of consolidating.
Anybody else agree consolidation makes sense?
Sure.
I know, if you keep bouncing that thing around, I'm going to get seasick.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot other people could look at the screen.
Okay, so that takes care of line three and four, is that correct? Siri, because those were the two on consolidation?
Yep.
Okay. So looking back at our spreadsheet, row number five is comprehensive student safety, and we again had two pass and three unsure.
Is this, is that the right one here?
I think so.
Yeah, that was it, the new one, yep. That's it.
Okay.
Okay, if you'll just take a moment and read through this, and those of you who were unsure, if you would let me know if you're sure of something now.
What if we're unsure if we are unsure then?
Don't confuse me this late at night.
Actually, this time I meant to be unsure. My concern when you talk about student safety is that it might can be interpreted as specifically we want more SROs, and we want more, you know, armed guards in school, law and health actors, and I'm far more in favor of prevention, and I just didn't see that explicitly in here, as opposed to safety.
I think this was trying to say you need student voice in which to go about developing those things. I'm just not sure you legislate it.
Yeah, and exactly, I looked at it, and it's like, I didn't see where it was going, and I could see I could be misinterpreted in ways I didn't like it, so I, that was my unsure.
Yeah, there, there are a few of these that I either did know or unsure, where I just thought, from all I agree with the idea behind it, doing it by legislation, and we're putting it on the districts rather than, I mean, this is something I think we should be doing, is having student voices in student safety, but I don't know that I want, I don't know that I want the legislature saying how we go about doing that.
So you guys, what I'm hearing is you're okay with a do not pass on this. Is there an opportunity at General Assembly for X discussion as to why? So that we could point, I could point this out? Okay.
Yeah.
You just go up with the red card at the time to speak, and you can speak for the other side.
Yeah, but, but if it's remote, can she do that?
My TV screen here.
Yeah, you can still do that, that still happens.
Yeah, I think they're going to have a hand.
Well, if you can do a red card, why the hell can't you do an amendment?
I'm not going to answer that, because I know they've been working on it very hard to determine how you do this correctly with parliamentary procedures within a virtual environment, so I am, I am not going to, I know they've got some great parliamentarians working on it to make sure you do it as best they can.
I'm glad that's not my...
I won't comment on their intelligence.
That's good stuff. Yeah, I, I, I guess I would vote do not pass. I think I voted unsure before.
Okay. Well, that's why it's very helpful to have this brief discussion. Okay, row six, flexibility of grad requirements. Two pass, two unsure, and one do not pass. So, thank you, Eric. So, thank you, Eric. You got it. Give you a second to read. I think I remember what my concern was. Would anybody else like to speak to it?
No, I was positive on this one.
Yeah, I'd like your concern.
Um, I'm a little concerned that. We're kind of letting our standards slip. I don't know how long we're gonna be in this current position and I'm not sure I want to relegate us to that much flexibility. Through 2024. And at some point, we have to get back on track and with remote learning. Being adjusted as we go along to increase outcomes. At some point, we can't use COVID-19 as the reason that. You need to be flexible and give more options to kids.
Really good point.
I hear you on that, but last 2024 is this year's freshman, right? Yeah. And. Realistically, it's at least one semester, possibly two of opportunities that there are gonna be some classes that can't be taught. And so that's where I'm. I think that there are things that could have impacted on a kid's plan for how they were gonna get through high school. Where they might have missed out on something. Now admittedly, as a freshman, you should have a lot of flexibility. And I get your point about, I, I take your point about concerns with relaxing standards. But it's really framed very closely that it's not just that they missed it, but that they missed it because of one of these declarations. And so I was comfortable with how tightly that was written.
Anybody else, Mark?
Yeah, uh, I'm concerned with the fact that as hard as we try technologically to get every kid hooked up. And I'm thinking of the, uh, the lower income students. Who, everything you can do is, is still not gonna be the perfect environment for them or the, uh, the level playing field, I should say. For them to be able to not have an effect on their abilities to, uh, to do the coursework. Uh, I'm concerned that we're building, building in a, an inequitable. Status, if you will, for those students if we, uh, don't go ahead and pass this. I understand you don't want to slip on your standards, but at the same time, I think we're gonna have to take a look at. You know, there's gonna, there's gonna be a number of students because of, well, they may be, they may be the only ones, uh, at home. Supervising their three other, uh, siblings, uh, who are also on, are online. So I think there's gonna have to be some flexibility here.
That's fair.
So the, the question that I would have on that is where does that flexibility come from? You know, then it's also, do you look at mastery-based credit learning? Do you look at other ways in which you can address these things, which we did, if you think about in March through, right? We looked at different ways that you could get credits. My concern with this is, is it is. How do you keep pressure on, on, you're right, it's a, it's a challenging environment, but where's the silver lining that we can shift some things? Forward that need to happen? And there's been always argument about the 24 credit shouldn't have it. And I will say, we've been able to at least, it expanded our school day. We've been able to take that. I think, you know. I'm has, I, I would agree with Cassandra. I'm concerned that it waters down. What happens? I also think it removes some pressure that we have to be thinking outside the box and do things differently. Because you're right, if we do what we always do, we'll have issues with kids graduating. If we can shift what we do, then we will.
Mike?
I was just gonna say, I think what Siri mentioned, the, well, think about what we did offer kids. And I think they were in line with the values of the board. So for example, a competency-based credit. You pass a state assessment with a course, uh, for, for a content area that is equivalent to what's taught in a course. And we say, you know what, you've demonstrated mastery. So that allows you to bypass the requirement to take algebra, for example, because you've passed smarter balanced at a three or higher. Or we said comparable courses or courses that are actually more significantly rigorous, but are in the same content area. And remember, we also ran those through the board. What that allowed us to do though is it save, you know, it's not just a kid who can't connect and we need to figure out a better way to connect. It might be a kid who's sick. It might be a kid whose parents are out of a job and they, they just can't for whatever reason connect. And we can say to that kid, look, you passed the smarter balanced assessment. You demonstrated competency. You took this more rigorous course. You demonstrated competency. That will allow you to graduate as opposed to saying, yeah, sorry, you didn't pass it. You need to go through summer. And so I think, you know, speaking to the concern is these all, as you remember, went through you. We came to you, said this is our best thinking. Now granted, some of those were rushed and we were making pretty quick decisions. And I would imagine there'd be much more questioning. But I, I do know, and I can speak to individual students that this allowed to cross the line and graduate. And we all know how important that is for a student's long-term success, not only for career, but for college entrance. Or long-term, um, you know, like, uh, long-term income for opportunities. And sometimes it's that one or two classes that could make all the difference. So I, I, I guess I would just strongly advocate, it, it has made a difference for kids. There are accountability measures built in and there are some things that are in line with the values of the board that I think would be worth consideration at least.
Definitely, um, competency. Mastery of skills. Can, is just another way that we, a student can show their knowledge. And I think we need to be looking at all those options now regardless.
I don't know, but I, I'm in favor of the, um, position.
Okay, so what, what was the overall?
I think it was three to two.
Three to two still?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, what? Did I think, I might have got Mark's vote wrong.
I'm saying yay.
Okay, yeah, three to two.
More flex.
You can argue that the flexibility comes from saying that you have the flexibility. I'm thinking about Mike's comments just were, so. If this allows people to do more competency-based crediting, that's a good thing. If it says you only need 20 credits to graduate, I'm not convinced that's a good thing.
I agree.
And maybe it's so, it's written so that it's not clear and that's why I'm having difficulty getting behind it, I guess.
I also agree.
Well, we can amendment.
You know, I think, I think it could be appropriate then. I mean, I think it's. Even though the, I think the board is more in favor of, of passing this than not, I think it would be appropriate for you to share your concerns. I, I, I think a number of, I mean, I share them. So, uh, so at least Siri did too. So that's at least the majority of the board.
It, it, and this is something where the.
I think you have to, you have to.
So, so the irony is that the class that this matters for the most is this year's 2020. And so it's either goes into the platform or it's, it becomes irrelevant. It's, it's a very, it goes stale real fast. And I, I'm not concerned for our students because I think that as Mike laid out, that we, we found a way around that is within the existing rules. I just, for me, it was a matter of fairness to students in other districts who might not have had the capacity to do something that creative.
That's a good point. It is a position on a statewide advocacy piece.
Yeah. So anyway. It certainly doesn't get to the top of my list of priorities, but it's one that I'm still on net in favor of.
Yeah, I think you voice your concerns, Cassandra, and you point out the weaknesses in this, in, in the way that this is written. And, and the fact that we, uh, aren't allowed to amend it, uh, raises serious concerns. Because God, you could, you could water it down, uh, way down if you wanted to. Or you could, or you could also then have, uh, legislature could say, well, uh, you, we want proof that our money is being well spent. And so you're gonna ratchet it up. So. I think you say yes, but with reservations.
Is that a category? Is there an orange card?
There is not.
And keep in mind as well. You can litigate this on, on the details. Yeah, the, the vote that matters is in the legislature. And this is really about is, is WASD going to get behind legislation that provides loopholes? I would imagine there will be substantial conversation around, oh my God, we've got this thing where they're opening a loophole. You can put it, drive a truck through. So we're not the only backstop for making sure they did it right.
Yeah. Good point. Okay, I will definitely speak to that one. Um, I better go brush up on how I can. When that part of the program occurs.
Yeah.
And so. Row seven is equitable levy collections for small school districts.
I was wrong. Moving to do not pass. It was number 52 when I was tired.
Okay, anybody else want to weigh in on that?
Not sure, so we can figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we're good on that one?
As do not.
As do not.
I have it up.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I've got flexibility on graduation still.
Oh. Yeah, it changed for me.
Oh yeah, I do remember reading this and going.
Yeah.
I think 5,000 per student is a lot of money.
It's just a clu-, it's just, I think it's like kind of clunky to the, I don't. Yeah. Anyway, I, I think.
Trying to raise the levy cap.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good with do not pass there. And then, is this another comprehensive school safety? The other one must have been a permanent position. So row eight, comprehensive.
This is, this is the, I think this is the prior one.
Oh, okay. So we've already gone over it maybe?
Flexibility.
I think this is it. I think the, I got this right? Sorry, everyone, for going so fast here. I think this is the addition. Can everyone see?
No, nope. I've got flexibility on my screen.
Well.
Then that, that's your, that's your internet, Mark.
Yeah, WASD website.
Uh, I can, I'll send you a link.
Don't worry about it. Just go ahead.
Okay.
I'll go with the group. I, to be quite frank, at this point, we're. Getting a little bit on the minutia side. Of things that will never make the top 20.
Well, I, I was in favor of this. I can't remember. I'm kind of curious if anyone was against it, what their thinking was.
I'm in agreement that the changes need to happen, that those are the changes that do align with everything, um, in regards to legislation and pieces. I, I think my challenge is, is the whole piece of should you be funding school resource officers is a whole nother component of conversation. But that's not for this legislative piece.
Right, right. I mean, this amendment just imposes, um, additional training, uh, right?
Which I think we've already. Required in our district.
So we would agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yes on that one?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Nourishing public schools and police partnerships amended or clarified. And three of us said pass, which I'm not sure means amended or clarified.
I get to see it this time.
So I don't think any of our jurisdictions allow their officers to have a school lunch or a cup of coffee. Actually, not, yeah, our municipalities don't allow their officers to receive anything at no charge. They are allowed to buy their lunch there if they want to. But it's more of a police, um. Policy.
Where in the world did this come from?
Uh, you know, it was some, some school district that really wanted to do it.
Yeah, I think I did.
Yeah, it sounds like we're talking.
I don't think it's gonna be a.
Chicago or something, getting things on the arm.
I don't think it's gonna be a ledge priority.
This is not making my top 20.
I think the amendments are fine. I just find the whole thing kind of confusing.
I would just not vote for it, period, but.
I can abstain? Nah, I see.
I, I would vote against. I would hope the amendment goes down, then vote against it. I don't even think it should be on. I think it's a silly position.
Siri, how, how are they gonna rank these things?
We rank them, so they're gonna act. Cassandra, do you know specifically?
No, I don't.
My understanding is after the fact, they're gonna put it out and then you're gonna go through and do it electronically. And so will our district will get one that will come to Cassandra and then she'll rank them. We'll have sent out to all of you before then.
Yeah.
Because there are many more positions that aren't even on there for the ranking. This was just positions that are being voted on.
Right.
Now it rings a bell. I think we have a.
Then we'll go from there.
I think they're gonna give us a week to rank order.
Okay, well, we'll do that quickly.
Okay.
Can we rank order higher than the number is? Only got top 40, can we say 1,000 to make a point?
So, support for school-based health, school-based health centers. Uh, three pass, one ensure, one do not pass.
Right, did we? Am I the right one here?
I'm pretty sure I'm a no.
I pushed about eight years ago and had my head handed to me, uh, at the board meeting, uh, when I tried to suggest that we ought to have them. And I, uh, it got, because of all the surgery centers that are around here. But I think we're not remembering the fact that we got a hell of a lot of schools that don't have, uh, a surgery center on every other block.
I, I kind of lost the plot. Which one are we looking at here?
Oh, sorry, we're looking at the support for school-based health centers.
Okay.
Yeah, Mark, it, it, did some of the schools don't have a what?
When I first came on the board, I was pushing for a school-based, uh, health center, whatever you want to call this, or, uh. Health, yeah, health centers. And, and I got my head handed to me by the rest of the board because we didn't need it. Because we've got, uh, uh, Overlake has a center here and Swedish has one over there and so forth. But we neglected to realize that, that not everybody has the, uh, access to healthcare resources that we have. Uh, there are some schools that need to have these things. And to be quite frank, if you're depending on insurance, uh, to get those kids to, uh, to Swedish or to Overlake, uh, you might as well just cancel Christmas because they don't have the insurance, they're not gonna get taken.
This legislative position is addressing liability issues and, because there actually is complete capacity at any point that schools can do school-based health centers. So when Bethel went about to do theirs, they had concerns about liability pieces. So that's where this legislation is coming from. It actually doesn't provide funding for school-based centers. It doesn't, it's none of those pieces, Mark. It actually is much more around. Having the capacity to establish it and addressing liability.
John?
Turn on all my microphones. I read this one as it, it's allowing for, uh, not-for-profit community healthcare providers. And I don't know. uh, not for profit community healthcare providers. And I don't know, so I don't know the current legislation around this because we can already have community based health centers in our schools. And so I believe the nuance here is that it's a not for profit community healthcare provider. But I don't, so I'm trying to understand what is the difference between this versus what we're already able to do, because we can do this already.
Well, and part of, part of my problem is there's only so much that schools need to be responsible for. If healthcare is a problem, let's fix healthcare. Let's not put, put it on the schools.
And I, I think. You know, I think, uh, we've, there's very, uh, it's interesting. There's very strong opinions about uh, school based healthcare centers. Uh, I remember one of our former superintendents had a very strong opinion. I remember one of our high school principals had a very strong opinion, both opposite, both people I respect greatly. Um, but I think the argument for is when you, when you think about uh, students in need, uh, one of the places they probably feel safest is, uh, at their school. And if they're not going to reach out to get that support elsewhere through other agencies, they may get it at their school. And so having kind of a collective set of supports in the school setting. Now, I think it's a pretty long runway to navigate getting a school based health center implemented, given all of the liability and things like that. I see they address it here. So I guess I'm not completely sure what this allows for that isn't already supported.
Well, if this is only liability, if we're, uh, they're only, if Bethel was concerned about their liability, uh, and I don't know why she, they wouldn't bring it to the stuff that they're insured to find out what the hell their, their, uh, exposure was. Uh, but if we're so concerned about social emotional learning, this is a prime part of it, folks. Uh, if you can't give, uh, uh, coverage, if you can't give liability coverage for that district, uh, then they're not going to be able to provide counselors for health, for mental health. It doesn't have to be a broken arm. It could be a broken train of thought. I mean, a broken, uh, uh, support system for them.
I'm just skeptical that you need healthcare centers to be a, a, a superset of counseling. Counseling I see as a school's responsibility. Healthcare I still see as a broader societal responsibility and I just, well, anyway.
Mental health is part of healthcare.
Mental care is part, part of healthcare, but just because you're providing mental care, doesn't mean you have to provide healthcare.
Just in regards to this position, the speaking here more is in regards to, it's a barrier potentially for any place that might want to do a school based health center. So the idea is that you would remove those barriers. It, it's, that's the component that's here in this legislation.
Yeah, I just don't think.
Not doing the value.
We have to adopt.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
You know, we're not saying we have to adopt and build one right now. We're saying that if you want to have one, you can have it.
And I think, you know, because these are statewide issues and we are in a fortunate position where we don't seem to need a healthcare facility on our school property. Um, but having gone to a rural district myself and realizing that it might be the closest place in 25 miles, you know, then other districts are looking at this in a different manner.
Yeah.
So it's not something I think we should do, um, but it might help rural districts.
Okay, so not a priority for us, but fine.
Okay, so yes, um, and I can tell them, we don't need it, but hey. Um, ubiquitous affordable high speed internet.
Yeah, and I was against this one again because, you know, where does the responsibility of the school district end? Sorry.
No, I, I have some concerns.
Okay.
It's, and this is where Yakima is currently doing a, um, sort of a partnership with, um, the city and private business and other nonprofits where they're, uh, able to use other people's internet. So the city say has their own internet system. I'm totally butchering this. The city has their own connectivity, huge tower looming over everybody so everyone can connect and the schools are able to use that for students who live in that area. Same as say you've got Microsoft somewhere and they obviously have a very strong, um, signal that students could be routed through if they, if a wifi hotspot isn't enough in the area that they live.
This is an equity issue. Voting against is voting against, uh, economic equity.
I, yep, I agree. I'm in favor of it strongly.
Chris?
He already said he wasn't.
Okay.
That's the thing. I'm not passionately against it, but I, I I certainly don't think this gets anywhere near our top 20 for our district.
Not for us. Um, it's a statewide issue that's, there's already legislators working on it. Larry Springer is working on this particular issue.
Yeah.
Well, to be quite frank, if Larry's working on it, we ought to be, uh, be, uh, supportive of our own legislator, to be quite frank.
Oh yeah, we, we've talked a couple of times. He's, uh, always interested in, um, you know, what our access is and what our, you know, stopping points and tripping points are. So for the good of the state, is it a yes on internet?
Sure.
Yes.
You can see I feel passionately.
Oh, you know what? Just, yeah, we don't need it. So we're, we're fortunate. We haven't needed some of these. Okay. And then equitable school funding, row 14.
That's right.
52. No, I mean, I was tired by then. I think I was unsure about this.
We had three pass, one ensure, one do not pass.
Okay, can we show the copy?
Yeah, come up.
Thank you. This has got to be one point type.
Uh, here. Back in.
Thank, thank you.
So oppose legislation resulting in reduction to state education funding if impacts fall inequitably among students persistently and disproportionately impacted by opportunity gaps.
Yeah.
I, I mean, the truth is that.
Sorry, Mark. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, I was, I mean, the truth is that, that, that could, I mean, honestly, that could result in, um, in impacting our district more, but I, I still nonetheless, uh, think this is good policy, uh, for the state as a whole and I'd support it.
Well, it's again shifting, uh, probably West dollars over to east, uh, east schools, uh, that everybody screams about, but um, it's equity and you can't really dodge that. I just want to know how many times they can put impact in one sentence.
Yeah.
So.
Siri, any strong feelings?
No strong feelings. I, you know, funding is tough, especially when it's limited.
I don't think I was the no, but the only reason I would have voted no would be, you know, there's a certain level of redundancy. I mean, how far do you want to get into the wordsmithing at the state level? Cause we're just making recommendations to legislatures. This isn't the law. Anyone? I don't hear passionately.
So I don't see this as a, a school funding, uh, proposal. I see this as more of, uh, not a blank check. I don't mean it that way too much, but you're giving authority to Wazda to oppose legislation that you don't know about yet. And for me, that doesn't feel in the spirit of this process. So when I read it, that's kind of how, that's what I walked away with. Um, if there's specific legislation, uh, it, it seems like it's an odd position because it's just saying in the future, you make the determination on which legislation you'll oppose versus having an actual position. So that's, that's why I kind of struggled with this one. Not that I disagree with the idea of not disproportionately impacting our, uh, you know, black and brown students across the state. It's more about, you know, what is this actually, what authority is it actually providing?
That's a good point. And I didn't ask you, um, I believe you went through some of these with cabinet?
So, uh, I passed this along the cabinet, I believe it was on Friday of last week and just asked them to kind of review items that were specifically relevant to their division. And so I don't know if anyone in cabinet has a comment around this specific one. Uh, but that's just kind of how I was thinking about it.
Okay. Yeah, anybody else, anybody at all, it doesn't have to be a board member, wants to weigh in, here's your big chance.
I don't have any additional comments either on this one. I agree. It's just a weird one about we're going to oppose things that, yeah. So, thank you.
My, my one concern is that, uh, come time for us to, uh, push another bond and levy. And someone brings up, oh gee, you're, uh, just going to shift the dollar to the eastward again. Is that something you could be, we should be concerned about this number 13?
I don't think so.
I'm, I asked the question.
I don't like that. Okay.
So what is the consensus? Is it just too bizarre and I abstain or are there strong feelings to pass?
I'm in favor of it.
Anybody else?
Sure.
You guys aren't making this easy. Come on. A line in the sand.
Got two votes. Need three more.
Well, it was, it was 311 before and I don't think anyone's changed their mind.
I think you can make the call Cassandra when you're there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
If I was to argue. Listen to the discussion, listen to what happens and then make a decision that way. Cause there's a lot of discussion that happens on the floor as well.
Okay.
And that will help to inform at the same time. This is just one of the data points.
Okay. I think that's it unless I'm not looking at the lines correctly. Because really, yo, there was just one person that was unsure or did not pass and everybody else, you know, majority did pass. So I felt like that we don't want to go through the entire thing.
No.
If it was that strong, you know, of a pass. So are you guys comfortable? Is there anything else you wanted to pull from the others to discuss?
Absolutely not.
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. That's the, the next piece of the input that I needed. Um, and then John, did we decide that on the work plan, there is a date for us to actually set our ledge priorities? On November 9th, maybe?
So, uh, I was going to look at that and, uh, I will let the board either know either this week or next week what, uh, the work plan can accommodate. Because right now it has it on for, it's that first meeting in November. We were, when we were in discussions, we were hoping to have it either end of October or, uh, beginning of October. But it also depends on when, is it when Wassa puts out their ledge positions? We're waiting for, for an agency that puts theirs out, or is it Wazda in their turnaround of this information? I don't remember which agency we said there's a delay in when they get theirs out. That would be helpful for us as well.
So Wazda will probably, since they're giving us a week as a board to then vote on Wazda priorities after the general assembly, um, maybe that is what is the holdup. And so that would be September 25th that, you know, the vote at general assembly takes place and then as a district, they'll, they'll email me results that then we can focus on and prioritize. And so that would, that takes us to like November 2nd. Cause we'll have a week after the 25th.
Okay.
So I don't think it's going to happen in October.
November, the beginning of November is our typical pattern.
Okay.
So.
And binge out the, uh, legislature is no longer accepting pieces of paper when you go by and visit them. Uh, and to be quite frank, you know, with COVID going on, I'm not sure how many legislative visits are going to be. Uh, I'm not sure we really need to print something up a special, uh, we can put on the website, but that's about it.
Yeah.
Well, we'll definitely have meetings with legislators, um, lining up after general assembly is done and after we set our ledge priorities. And those are probably going to be teams meetings and they'll just have an electronic.
Throw that out. There's no reason to print it up is what I'm saying.
All right, President La Liberty, take it away.
Uh, okay. I think we're, we've reached the end of the agenda for the study session tonight. Um, any additional comments or questions from the board? We have more, more to talk about following. I'm moving on. The board will convene in executive session. Uh, John, we have, we have, we have, I have on the agenda that we have a closed session and an executive session. Do I have that correct?
Say that again?
Uh, sorry, let me wait. Internet's slow. Um, I have that we have both an executive session and a closed session. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we're going into executive session first? Is that the order?
Yes, and then you'll, uh, close the meeting and then we'll move into closed session because it's, uh, it's allowable under, uh, OPA. OPMA.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the board will convene in exec, in executive session at nine oh seven, um, for 30 minutes. For the purpose to consider the selection of a site or acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase and the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or leased. The meeting will reconvene at nine thirty seven. There will be no board action following executive session.
Those are separate links, right?
Yeah, there's a separate link. And this study session is now adjourned.
All right.